Can I have your attention? Zoe Wood of Appeals for June 4th will now come to order. Please call the hall.
Mr. Wilton.
Present.
Mrs. Crowitz.
Present.
Mr. McQuarrie.
Present.
Mrs. Curley.
Present.
Mr. Cowan.
Present.
Mr. Wood.
Present.
Mr. Cole.
Present.
Mr. Gisano.
Present.
Is there a motion to accept the minutes from the last meeting, May 21st, 2019?
Some more.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Cowan, second, and Ms. Curley, please call. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. The first case this evening will be case number 9883, 80 Ocean Street. Petitioner Thomas Cuttenberg. Cuttenberg. Cuttenberg to permit the removal of an existing 5-by-3, 5-by-13 porch and replace with a 9-by-17 deck with lot coverage in excess of the allowed in an hour-long district. Any questions here?
Yes.
What was the name of the trust?
80 Ocean Street.
Name?
104.
Do you own the radio?
No, I do not.
And that's what it says for you. Could you tell me who owns it?
221 Woodburn Street. In there. Triangle. Only for 60 something years. Okay, the removal of the deck that exists now, we've seen the picture, the plot plan is there now. The idea is to extend the deck out five feet beyond what it is right now, not the roof. The roof will remain intact. It'll be an open deck. The main purpose is to change the stairway, to make it a safer way to go from the house. That's the reason for the, the main reason for the petition. And the stairway will be re-changed.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. I would ask Mr. Cuttenberg, you might not be able to go over at nine feet. No, a hundred meters higher than that. That's really not enough. Can you go over to 7 feet? But I don't think you can walk.
No, I don't believe he can because the garage exists there. And if we did then...
That's why I'm asking you that question.
No, so we leave...
We didn't see... Yeah, I see.
So that we would not have any space between the deck and the garage. So to leave a passable space between his deck and his garage, that we would only come out, extend nine feet. The stairs are on the side of that.
All right, that answers the question.
Okay.
Any other questions in the board?
Usually, you would come and say stairs up to reach some markings so we can see on the ground how far it is up and how long it is, like a marking on the house or on the sidewalk and the stairs. But there was nothing there at all.
No, there are no markings. I didn't know marking. I did not know that you acquired that, or I would, I would have done that. I, I went by the drawings that were made up by Green Associates. I was told that that's what I needed to present that...
You can't see anything because of that, because the window, the window is a fence.
It ends before the window, and the, and the way the stairs are refigured in the drawing is to keep it away from the window because I cannot bring the staircase down in front of that window.
So we leave the variance because as it is now, it's short of the setback and it's going to continue that savings.
Right, but it also incinges upon the area between the garage and the house.
Okay.
Which is probably seven and a half feet now. It's his garage. It will be down to about five feet. You know, three or four feet in order, you could still pass.
I thought that sprayed paint mark would look like a corner where the garage is a little, kind of a white corner.
That might have been done by them. That I do not know. Because they, that was...
It looked like additional four feet.
Right, that's probably who did that, was reading. That I don't know for sure, but...
Will the roof stay the same?
The roof, this line is staying exactly the same.
Can you say if it's going to extend?
No, the roof will not extend that. Only the deck will extend.
I'll ask you if it will get aligned. So we're not going to move those lines?
No, they, they will not be touched at all. Nope.
Any other questions in the board? Any other questions in the board? Say yes or no. Thank you very much. I'll close the meeting.
Thank you.
Anybody else in favor of this petition? Anybody else wish to speak in favor of this petition? Say yes or no. I'll close it for those in favor. Is there anybody here in opposition to this petition? Anybody here in opposition? Say that there's nobody here in opposition, I'll not close the meeting for those in opposition. What is the motion for?
The movement we seek more of the petition.
Motion made, second?
Second.
I think Mr. Mr. our accountant made it, it took one second, or vice versa, doesn't matter to me. Follow the whole process.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, Mr. Grant.
Mrs. Curley?
Yes, Mr. Grant.
Mr. Cowan?
Yes, Mr. Grant.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Gisano?
Mr. Grant. Petitioner Grant.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next case this evening is case number 9885, 207 Chestnut Street. Petitioner Patricia Garcia, by her attorney Sam Vitale, to permit, to permit, to permit the operation of a pre-existing non-conforming apartment building by an increase of the number of units to the total of 11. On a 12,471 square foot lot in the V1 business district, finding that the alterations do not result in expansion of the water, detrimental, that's how I'm going to make it work. Mr. Vitale.
I am attorney Sam Vitale. This is Patricia Garcia.
Hi, everyone.
This property is familiar to people who lived in Memphis for a period of time. It's the old home of the Janettes.
No, no.
You gotta be old, Mr. Cowan and I, remember the Drum and Bubal Chor. Or even remember Drum and Bubal Chors, but it was the home of the Janette's Drum and Bubal Chor. It was a building in which they practiced and did their various things. The property is in the business district. It's near the corner of the intersection of Chestnut, Essex. It's a, a building that's been, with many uses over the years. But in 2003, it came to the Board of Appeals. And at that time, the Board of Appeals approved it for a residential use of six apartments. And the board had certain stipulations. And I think when I made my presentation in private, I pointed out that I had difficulty myself in determining whether the stipulations that the board had put on in 2003 had all been fulfilled. But I have to rely upon the fact that the records here in the assessor's office say that the, a certificate of occupancy was issued for six apartments in the beginning of 2005. So it got approved in the spring of 2003. Apparently, they took some time to do the work. And then in the beginning of 2005, a certificate of occupancy issued for six units. And so, we believe over the years that there were six units of varying sizes that were there. Whether, I cannot speak to whether all of the conditions that the board put on in, when it gave its approval, were in fact carried out. About a year ago, Patricia and her company acquired the building, and the first thing they did is they emptied it up. They evicted everybody, so they could start anew. And then they went and reviewed some of the history. They engaged an architect. They engaged Mr. Reed as a surveyor. And they put together a proposal, which is the one that's before you now. Proposal before you now is to extend what we say is a non-conforming use. Why is it a non-conforming use? Because it is a residential use in an area that's own business, number one. And number two, with respect to the dimensions, the building has, sits to one side, as you see in Mr. Reed's plan. And for those reasons, dimensional and use, it's non-conforming. What we propose is to extend that non-conforming use by increasing the number of residential units from six to 11. Originally, we thought about 12, but now it's down to 11, and the mix, I believe, is 10 one bedrooms and one two bedroom. And then we submitted a plan when I filed, that reflected more spaces for parking. And then I, I had Mr. Reed and we examined, the site sits between Fayette Street and Chestnut. And so, we considered the width of the drive-in and the width of the drive-out. Because you can enter from Chestnut and you can exit from Fayette, but in fact, you can enter from Fayette and exit onto Chestnut. And there's a 24, 25-foot wide drive. With that, your, the zonal allowance allows parking spaces to be at 90-degree angles. So it's the old trade-off again about how much open space, green space. So we, we did two plans. The original parking plan I had showed 22 spaces, but it didn't account for additional green space, it didn't account for snow storage, and it didn't provide a space for the dumpster. Correct. And so, I had Mr. Reed revisit the plan, do another plan, which does provide for the dumpster, does have added green space, has the requisite number of parking spaces, and has two-way traffic. You can enter and exit off of Chestnut, you can enter and exit off of Fayette. So we think that the, that plan with the 17 spaces is a superior plan to what was there and to what we in fact originally proposed. With respect to the building, there really are no exterior changes other than hopefully removing the graffiti, pointing up some of the bricks, which by the way, I think back and when the board approved it many years ago, was part of the conditions that were put on it. And, and so, not only do we hope to satisfy those conditions, but we hope to satisfy any other conditions that the board may put on now, and obviously improve the mix of the units that were in the building, essentially reducing, well, we're increasing the number, we're reducing the size of the units. So we have now 11 units, of which 10 are one bedroom and one two-bedroom. Where before, there were six of, almost indeterminate as to how they were laid out or how many people... It was one of those kinds of buildings in which there were, let's just say, lots of people, whether they were all related by blood or marriage remains to be seen. And so, from the time the building was acquired until now, the first job was to empty the building of its existing tenants for two reasons. To solve some problems, and second, to make it available to be refurbished. And then, so what we're here, before you, asking is for permission to refurbish it in the fashion that we suggested in the application, and that we have with the supporting documentation, including Mr. Reed's plan and the architect's plans. And Patricia was kind enough to put together a package that's got it color-coded so you can see it, so we have a few of these, that essentially, this large plan, I know you are aware, or you've got probably the history, that that's the prior approval by the board. And so, we'd be glad to answer any questions any member may have.
Is that the dumpster in there?
The big dumpster? So the reason why the dumpster is there now is because we have to start doing some demo in there. Reason being was because when we went to do the inspection on the property, I found out that the building was actually sinking. And I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with a lot of issues that the old historical buildings are having in Boston, where they're sinking and there, a lot of them are collapsing. So one of the things I did there was I had to get in there right away and start demoing a lot of that, a lot of sections of the building, so I can redo the structure, so it doesn't continue sinking. And we could fix it, so we would never have any form of issue with the building ever collapsing or causing some sort of issue if anybody ever walked by or something like that and a brick fell or something.
So it's not all wrong?
It's 90% demoed right now.
What about those contractors and trucks in the yard?
So the contractors and the trucks in the yard, some of them work for me, and some others are just there temporarily until we get the building up and running. Because I need some, some sort of money coming in, just because I'm, I'm, the company, I am the company. I, you know, and I am doing this, you know, with my family, and we're working on this. So any type of income, we can get in there until we get the building, we get, if we are able to get this approved, we can continue on working and start doing the mechanical portion of this and the framing.
There was three units, three units, four, four, five, three...
How many were there when you pushed?
So there was supposed to be, there was supposed to be six units, but there was six units plus three illegal units in there. And the reason being was that I had to also get rid of everyone on top of, you know, not just to do the structure, to redo the structure and, you know, refurbish it, but also it was a, it was a serious safety hazard in there. You know, if there was a fire in there at any point, I can't even imagine the number of casualties, because there were illegal apartments in there where, you know, there was only one in and, one way in and one way out. So I had to, you know, evict everybody unfortunately at a very, very quickly, you know, just, you know, to avoid any form of liability on my end, and also to save their lives if anything were to happen to them. And that's kind of where it was before. Now, currently, like I said, the, the building is right now 90% demolished. And it needed to be demolished, because there was just too many illegal apartments in there.
There was a sign on the gate, you were renting, you were renting, and some because for anyone that wanted an apartment space, they could rent.
Right, so for right now, until we figure out if we're able to get the approval or not, the, the parking space is just being rented right, out right now, so I can have some sort of money coming in, until we find out if you guys will be granting the approval or not. Or which direction we'll be able to go, so we can continue on the project.
So you're, what you're trying to do, what you're saying, it's not as good to me, to the city.
I'm sorry?
No, you're doing it all, the state government code and the city codes and everything.
Exactly.
And they're aware of that, and you're doing that unless they know the weight of the building and everything?
Yes.
The city?
Yes. So I have already submitted to the city the structural drawings.
Oh, you have structural drawings?
Yes. Would you like to see them? I have copies as well.
But it's not something I agree with, right? That's huge for my ear for the city. So I think that she's explaining something.
Oh yeah, she's, she's put some time.
Well, I applaud the effort in the, in the, you know, the redoing of the building, all those things. I think it's, it's a, it's a great way to go. You, you are looking at double the occupancy of this building. And it's, you know, it's, it's a big move. You know, you're almost, you're almost doubling. The six allowed of looking, you're looking to 11, correct?
Well, as we said before, the essence of this building is residential. The number is volume or degree. And the fact is that they're smaller units. They may be more units, but they're smaller. They're one bedroom. The, the size of the building and the exterior will not change and has not changed. It's the layout in the interior. So she found six that were approved, three that weren't. That made it nine, okay? And in terms of the use, we're trying to make it consistent with what the current codes and what's allowed. But in terms of the effect on the neighborhood, which is the criteria for alterations to a non-conforming building, we think the effect on the neighborhood is a positive one. We don't think it's detrimental at all, let alone substantially more detrimental. And if anything, we think it's an improvement. So with respect to satisfying the criteria, yeah, there are more lawful units than there were approved by the board or used illegally, but the fact is that the lawful units will comply with all of the current codes, satisfy the requirements that the board had the wisdom to place as conditions. But whoever followed up, I couldn't find, and I, I didn't want to say it wasn't lawful. So if you look at, when I wrote the supporting statements, I, I sort of couched it in language that said I couldn't determine that all of the conditions had been satisfied. But at the end of the day, I can't question it. There was a certificate of occupancy, the assessors are taxing it as a four to eight or more units right now. And it was, and it says on the assessor's card that they went out and inspected, and they, they, part of the reason that triggers the assessors to go out is when you get a building permit, or you get an approval from the building department, and you make it an improvement. It says on the field card that in, in 2005, there was a certificate of occupancy issued for six units. And it's got the initials of the assessor who saw it.
Mr. Chairman, how many bedrooms were in those six units?
They, well, the assessors say it's not six units. The assessors say that they're taxing it as four to eight, which is the classification that they're using.
Four to eight bedrooms?
No, four to eight units. Okay. But they then describe it in the narrative, says it's a building built about 1873. It says with six units, six baths, zero half baths, and then it says 18 rooms total and six bedrooms. That's, that's the written description. But I think that we found more than that.
Now you can have 12 bedrooms, right?
In total, yeah. So the style of how I'm doing these is very similar to the new structures that they're doing actually in the North End with the lofts. So these are going to be set up as lofts. So rather than going this way, they're going to be going up.
Fourth floor is the third floor, fourth floor.
Right, so the third floor is actually two floors. It's the third and the fourth floor combined, and you have...
Fourth floor.
Right. So you have the bedrooms and the kitchens and the bathrooms downstairs, and then the big loft, open space bedrooms upstairs.
How much square feet is the whole building?
The whole building is a total of 12,141 square feet. And living space, we are looking at between 8,000 to 9,000 square feet in total. Each unit is about between 400, the smallest one is 435, the largest one is 872 square feet. So they vary in sizes.
The first one.
And that's, and that's because, and also, it's, you're looking at it from this way, you're not even looking at it from going up. So they're actually much larger than, um...
The fourth floor, how much of those square footage on the third and fourth floor are there? You're just out of the...
Well, you don't, you don't live those square footers, so you can't really count them.
Right. That's not including livable square footage upstairs, because they're going to be lost. It's going to be just one open, huge, large bedroom. Yes. They're going to be large, open bedrooms.
Open concept.
Yes, yes.
Absolutely.
Yes.
But I, I think that the parking plan is good, and I think it really is a service to the community to provide those 11 apartments, because they're in there, we, all we hear about consistently nowadays is housing shortage. I don't think these apartments are necessarily going to fix down on Monroe Street for the new property owner, or if you can shut it off. I think that would be a service to the community, so I support it. I admire your vision.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions in the board?
Yeah, was this building spr- was it fully sprinkled when you bought it?
When I bought it, it was, uh, yes, it was fully sprinkled. And we're going to keep it that way. We're just going to make the adjustments, and again, everything is going to go through the city. We've already started going through the city and the...
That's not for the test, right?
Yes.
I see the stairs has a line, two doors along the front. They still there, I can't...
Yes.
Yeah.
The building is fully sprinkled.
You have exterior plans, but you have plans to show, you don't do the exterior?
To the exterior, in terms of masonry work and so forth.
Or whatever, you've got these spans here on the left.
So all of that is going to be removed.
You've got the windows, the...
All of those are going to be removed. I don't know if you can see the side windows that we already put in. They're going to be, can I take a look if you don't worry? Yeah, so the windows that you see here are going to be how they're going to be in the front of the building. So we're going to have 80 to 40, um, 80 inches by 40 size windows. They're going to be large windows. My biggest thing about this building that I want to do is I really want to bring that, that old historical look it used to have, and just modernize it and bring it back. Yeah. Yeah, it's beautiful.
So this is, you talking about this view?
Yes.
Where it's all been worked in?
Yes. So when I purchased the building, it was like that. I'm going to open all that back up. Yeah. It's going to look, it's going to look just how it looks on the side. I already redid the side windows, the, the windows on the side of the building, and the front is going to be just like that. No, the other side. We still have to do those. Yep. So those are brand-new windows. The whole entire building is going to have brand-new windows.
Good.
Yep.
These were the size that they were, you just put new ones in?
Some of them were that size, some of them were not. Some of them I had to break through the brick to open them up again.
It appears that people got approval in like April of 2003, and it took until January later in 2005 to get the job complete to wherever it was. And then after that, I can't speak to what happened. I don't know.
Any more questions in the board?
I have a question. Thank you very much.
Any other questions speaking in favor of this petition?
So we're going to leave.
Any further questions speaking in favor of this petition?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Rick Starbitt, under the 221 Verona Street, Atlanta. I'm Ward Two City Councilor. 207 Chestnut Street is located Ward Two. Since I came into office, it's been a problem with dumping trash in the yard as it busts to Fayette Street. I've been through the property with the property owner, looked over the plans, talked about what was going to be done there. It has ample parking. It is being done in a way with minimum bedrooms, so it'll have limited impacts on the school system with Ingalls basically outside its back door. It's overcrowded, because it is, and we really can't take any more kids in there. So I think it goes a long way to, as Mr. Wood had stated, provides affordable, single-bedroom housing in that section of the city. And again, parking is, is one of the biggest nightmares we face as, as city councilors. And particularly in that area, we've got large apartment buildings that really don't have parking. We've got street and Fayette Street Court, single-family homes that don't even have driveways. So parking is at a premium, and it is a problem down there. And this property, that is not an issue. So for those reasons, and the fact that it's such an unlikely building that, that I would like to see calmed down over, it is quite an undertaking, and, and I hope that she can pull it off, because it is a lot of work. But right now, that building is, is a fire trap. I did see the structural work that was done in the basement and to shore that building back up, and it was considerable. So I'm hoping she can be approved and, and get the building redone. Thank you.
So the only construction work you did was in the...
No.
You sure it helped?
No, I did the second floor, I did the entire building minus the first floor.
Why would you do that?
Because it was, there was all the illegal apartments upstairs. We had to knock everything down. I mean, it was a fire trap.
You didn't have to knock everything down, you had everybody move. You could have come before the board, before you did any of that.
The demo? So the way that the building was, I mean, you're looking at a situation where, you know, it was just, the, the guy who used to own the building before me had done so much work in that building without, without licensed contractors, without going through the city, and he had done it layer after layer after layer after layer, that no matter who went in there, they had to knock every, they had to demo all of it. The only thing that's left is the brick, which is what I want to heat, and then I want to redo all of that, so it's safe. That's like the biggest thing, it has to be safe. And healthy, because I mean, oh my gosh, the rats that came out of there, the, the trash that was in there, it was just an awful situation. Like, there was nothing that you could salvage, to be honest. You couldn't salvage refrigerators, you couldn't even salvage the walls, because even the walls were rotting from the outside. It was, it was bad.
Taking a lot for granted, though. I mean, what if this wasn't, just say, what if this wasn't granted, what would you do?
So if this wasn't granted, then I would just redo the, um, the building anyways to make it safe for everybody, and just do three six-bedroom, uh, three six-bedroom units. But either...
Six-bedroom.
Sorry, yeah. Yeah, I would just, you know, we would keep it as the six units, and we'd just do three bedrooms in each. But no matter if, I can't, even if I didn't get this granted, I would have to redo that, because it just wasn't safe for anyone to live there.
Oh, I understand, but only it was living there, that's my point.
No, they were.
I know, but when you bought the house, you had, you evicted everybody, because it wasn't safe.
Right.
That's what I mean, there wasn't anybody living there. You had to worry about safety.
Oh no, when I purchased the property, there were people living there.
I know, and...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't understand what I'm saying. You evicted everybody?
Yes.
So then there was no problem with being, uh, safe, there was nobody living in there.
Right.
So you didn't have to take all the walls down until you came before the vote, which is...
So the way, okay, so that's actually a very good question, I'm so glad you brought that up. And the reason being was because that building in the nineteen seventies used to be used as a, um, they used to use it for offices. And because no one ever, no one from the city ever followed up when they awarded this gentleman, the previous owner, um, the, the, uh, the, the right to have six units in there, um, he just moved people in there and you had situations where you had bedrooms where there was no windows. So if there was a fire, people wouldn't be able to get out. Um, so no matter what, I had to knock it down to make it safe for that reason. I had to knock down those walls to make it safe because the windows were set up where, I mean, the bedrooms were set up where there was no windows. I couldn't, I, I personally couldn't allow myself to have tenants living in a place where their bedrooms didn't have any windows.
Because nothing to do with knocking anything down until you came before the vote. Nobody was living there, you weren't renting it out to anybody.
There was a safety issue with the bricks falling off. You can do interior renovation, the board approved it for six units. If you're a responsible owner as she is and you find people are occupying it illegally, it would seem to me that your duty bound to do exactly what she did, which is get those illegal units out of there. And in the interest of safety, which I think she's eloquently described, uh, she had to take those steps. She, the work she's doing is, is market improvement over what this board allowed and then whatever the former owners did, inconsistent with that. So we want to return it as she's indicated to its rightful place. But the issue of safety isn't for just the occupants. It's in a dense neighborhood. If there's a fire in that building, it affects anybody who's close about it. If the bricks fall off, it affects anybody walking by, driving by. So it isn't just the occupants. In fact, she was probably more concerned really about the potential liability, as she said when she spoke, okay? Because of her responsibilities as a, an owner, whose duty bound to satisfy those codes. So if you buy a piece of property and then you learn that people are using it unlawfully, your duty bound to do what she did, which is get them out and correct it. And that's what she did.
Basically, no matter what, I would have had to, regardless of you guys granted this or not, I have a duty to make that right.
I understand, so we didn't end it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for this petition? Anyone else in favor of this petition? And if there's not opposed, those in favor, is anybody here in opposition to this petition? Anybody here in opposition to this petition? And if there's not, saying that there are none opposed, it goes to the court.
Uh, I would make a motion to continue it. When's our next meeting?
July sixteenth.
July sixteenth. And, and the rea- reason is, this is a, this is, this really is the purpose and, and, and the petition. This is a major rehab and I really want to make sure against that, I feel like this board, what the board wanted to do was really been, you know, some, what I consider tight conditions, which, uh, it looks at someone who's never got approved, is really taking opportunity to get on there, particularly on the exterior and also what work is, what we're proposing on the interior. But the exterior to me is just as important as the interior. And then at that point, I mean, I'm really happy with what you're doing, but I'm not prepared to vote for this size project with just so many question marks hanging out there. And again, I think we have an obligation to just, to make it right and work with you on this. Um, because I do support what you're doing, but I am in no way prepared to vote yes on something that basically this one is shallow bills, right? And with, with what I consider, I, I really want to see some, some, not extensive, but I want to, I want to be able to say that, and maybe, you know, put in one of the motions, the type of work that we'd like to see on the exterior as well, that's all. Yeah, well, good, then I'll, I'll take them home. We'll continue it and I'll take them home and I'll look at it. I've got two weeks to look at. I don't think I'm being unreasonable. This is, this is, this is a, this is a common-looking piece of property. And I know that you had it for a year and I understand that, hasn't been much improvement on, on the I V U and whatnot. And so I just want to take, take an extra couple of weeks and do my due diligence on this now that I have got an understanding of what, what these people are looking to do. And I am very supportive of it. But I'm not going to just restem something at this point in time when I have a lot of questions.
I, I, I applaud your efforts, and I, I completely, and wholeheartedly agree with everything Mr. Cole has said. I, you know, I love what you're doing, I love the approach you're taking, but I, I don't disagree, I honestly agree.
A question to continue to July sixteenth?
July sixteenth, yeah.
Do we have any specific, um, you know, points for her to, to focus on?
No, I'm, I'm particularly, I'm just interested in if we do a site visit, uh... Well, the acting chair, the board, have you seen it? We're not by it. So we love that we do windows in the front of it. The fire escape, will we talk about the fire escape?
The architectural? Yeah, that's a full sketch.
Yeah.
Is there any exterior elevation, elevation, there's no...
Is there any exterior elevation, you said there's structural?
Oh, structural work, yeah, but interior?
We've got, we've got, I had a set of plans that, that had electrical framing, uh, more, what I would call working drawings. Yeah, and I didn't think the board would...
Yeah, I would like to see the elevations on the exterior.
I just, you know, like, I'd like to know what you're going to do with the lodges on the first floor, but, you know, the front entry, you know, the, the water line side, that's on the far end of the building, just, you know...
So because... Yeah, sure, so I, like I said, the windows are going to be, in the front, they're all going to be opened up. That's one of the things I'm going to do. Um, that, the first floor, that had that storefront, I'm going to get rid of that. And I'll be completely honest with you, my biggest concern, you know, I was, I'm going to focus on the outside of the building and I'm going to do the windows and that's definitely a priority. I already started doing that, the building has about eighty, seventy-five percent?
Our roof's cracked, it can be made easier for everywhere.
Yeah.
Again, we had to, that, that machine on the exterior.
Yeah? Okay. Okay. Okay.
The whole side?
All four sides.
Sure, we can do that, that's not a problem.
And again, say, on a smaller scale, say, I mean, we turned it around pretty quick. And, yeah, we're not looking, I, I, all your, all your internal, um, calls or whatever, we're not looking at that.
Yeah, but that's what he gave us, I mean, I, I pulled that out from, uh, you, Mr. Giasono, Mr. Callen, maybe me, Mr. Cole, you could read it, but... I mean, I had plumbing, electrical, framing, yeah.
My biggest concern was, and for the interest, because of finance, we are on a financial budget, my biggest concern was honestly the structure. And the reason being was I was afraid of having a situation like we've seen in Boston where we've seen literally buildings collapsing because they, their structure cannot hold anymore.
Yeah, well, you need more, you need...
Sure, I can... Yeah.
Are there still going to be, uh, fire escapes?
Yes, we're keeping those, I love those.
Yeah, I'm going to suggest it, I'm, I'm pushing it on.
No, you guys can come whenever you want.
I, I just, you know...
You guys just can just call me and I can come down and open it up.
Mary, Mary?
Yeah, we'll just...
We can talk. Mary is the clerk, she can let you know a date.
Okay, yeah, no problem.
And June sixteenth, July sixteenth, so you can...
I would think so, yes.
The motion would be, motion to continue to, I believe?
That to do the, to do the site visit and do the, yeah.
And it's side view and exterior, exterior elevation drawings, correct?
Yeah.
Anything else?
No.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
We continue to July sixteenth. Miss, uh, Mr. Crowley?
Yes.
Mr. Callen? Mr. Cole?
Yes.
And Mrs. Giasono?
Continue, our office will be in touch with you, our area will be in touch with you too. Or ask them if that makes sense, considering that's the best community for all of us. And I think we can leave you too, if you want.
Thank you.
Question, is there anybody here, um, sixty-one Bassel Street? Nope, that's fine, I just, um...
We're going to take that one?
I'm just going to, I don't want people to say that. So, um, the next case this evening will be case number nine-eight-seven-nine, sixty-one Bassel Street. Um, I'm not going to link the advertisement as presented because I don't believe it. I believe it reflects what is looking to be done, the petition is a lot here.
Yeah, I'll get you bigger ones, no problem.
So, what, what I'm looking to do is I'm actually going to set, we're going to, um, I'm going to make a motion to vote to withdraw this petition. The petition has, has come up, the petitioner has written me a letter, I know everyone has all seen it, um, what he clearly is looking to do is not what is represented in the advertisement. Um, so I, I believe there's a lot of misunderstanding between ISD, Robert the Neighbor, the petitioner, and everybody. So I think at this time, the easiest thing would be to make a motion, I mean, make a motion to withdraw this petition, but it's, but the petitioner, go back down to ISD, run this out, go over it, they, let the neighbors see what's going on, and then let it come back before us.
Yeah, I think that's the way to go, just hang it on, nothing's happening. I would have thought it would, would draw without prejudice, so we can't go back.
So motion to withdraw without prejudice?
I'll second that.
Your motion is seconded, call the office.
Mr. Wood?
Here's to your...
Mrs. Crowley?
Yes.
Mr. Callen? Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Giasono?
Yes.
With the power of the prejudice?
With the power of the prejudice. Real quick, did you guys have a quick question?
Well, it's not going to continue, no, continue, just thrown out.
To drop without prejudice gives the petitioner the ability to come back and file another petition.
And then you'd be notified if this...
Okay, yeah, there's a lot of vacations and stuff like that coming up and what are going on around...
Do you understand what he's looking to do?
Yeah.
He wants to build a deck, right?
Huge, everywhere, yeah. Yeah. Several, several.
Okay, so you guys do a plan, just do what he wants to do.
The wood print, whatever.
So, at this point, we just, we'll see what he's going to do, but I would imagine he's going to come back through, you guys will be, you guys will be notified and you will have the authority to do everything the same as you thought. I, I would imagine we're not going to see him in the next month because...
That means three months.
I would imagine, yeah, if, if he gets back, then before he goes on a road shot. So you guys, I mean, a couple of...
Did he write you a letter?
He wrote me a letter, yes. So he's out, he's out of country.
Can we have a question on that? We have questions on the drawings, about protect this, of course.
Yeah, we're going to have...
It's one, it's one.
I don't know.
I don't like you doing this, this is a letter, you're...
Isn't that a problem with that, that house?
Do I have to pop the letter in there or not, does it matter? Does the letter extend what? If you take that, I got, you trust me. I'm going to, Mr. Cole, I'm going to roll.
Well, get down here.
Ma'am?
It's letting them do it.
Excuse me.
Yeah, the half is done.
Okay. The next case this evening will be case number nine-eight-eight-six, Twelve Rogers Ave. Um, petitioner is Gino...
Riccadelli.
And, uh, to permit that they continue for an R four two-family structure and a three-family in the high-rise district of R five, I think that's such all the issues, um, Robert's also thinking, we want that to remember, we'll go to the next...
Good night, folks. Good evening, um, my name is, my name is Gino Riccadelli, I'm, uh, in my capacity as trustee, I'm the owner of Twelve Rogers Ave. This building was built in nineteen hundred as a two-family structure. At some point, um, along the way, uh, a third unit was built on the, what would be the, the third, the third floor if there was not a, a unit at all at the time. And I have no idea of knowing exactly when that was done. I do have, um, some folk directory records that suggest, you know, in nineteen fifty-eight it had it as, as two, two, uh, families in there. Nineteen sixty-one, there were three. So there was no nineteen, uh, fifty-nine or sixty directory available, so somewhere in there, I assume it became, um, a three-family. But again, I have no way of knowing for certain, there's no building permit pulled, pulled at the time. Um, so, and since then, I, you know, since, I've owned it since two thousand and nine. Um, and it was a three, three, there were three units in there when I bought it. It continued, I continued it as three units and it wasn't until recently, um, I refinanced and the, uh, appraisal indicated as, as a two, and that's when it brought my attention that the, the city had it as a two, even though it was assessed as a three at every point that, that I've had it. I, well, I bought it, I bought it from a bank, so I use, actually, I didn't get a loan, I actually used a home equity line on my home and I closed it in two weeks, so there was no appraisal done at the time. It was done in two thousand and nine, right after the crash, um, and I, I bought it with the home equity line so that I wouldn't have to, back then, you had a better chance of getting the properties. Every unit, every unit. I don't, I don't have a plan of that, but the, the fire department has been in there and the fire department... I don't have a plan, I don't, I could have one ma- I could have made, I don't know if there's one that exists, but I could have one drawn if that makes a significant difference. I, I mean, I do have, you know, and not, um, I do have... Right, right, I mean, the, the... Um, I, I, I could have it done, I, again, I don't have one, I don't know of where one exists. If that was the condition of approval, I'd be happy to, to, to get that for you, absolutely. And, and there's no alterations being done on the building, this is the way it existed. I believe, I, I did ask for a zoning determination on this because it's an R five district and so a three-family is allowed. Right next, next door is Bridgewell six-unit building, next to it is a thirty-four unit building. Um, and there's, I have, you know, photos and assessors' map showing how many units, how big the lots are. I did ask for a zoning determination from the building inspector because I believed it was a legal three. Um, they indicated two reasons that they thought it wasn't parking and the size of the lot. um, regulations require five spaces, and they can't be tandem, uh, tandem spaces, and so I'm showing them as tandem. So, you could either ask for a variance to, to allow me to have less spaces, or you could allow me to have tandem spaces, so...
Even, let me, let me slow it down for a sec. None of these spaces are even legal size, so...
This was drawn in conformance with the, with the...
They're not there? Eight and a half feet, it's a fair. So, I, I mean, let's, let's, let's go in reverse a little bit. You, so, you, this, you bought this in two thousand and six, correct?
Nine, nine, two thousand and nine.
Two thousand and nine.
Yes.
And you bought it as a two, it must have been a two-family in two thousand and nine.
There were three units in the building, there was...
Yeah, it's, it's a two-family, correct?
It appeared...
What's the city have assessed as?
Assesses a three. They've had it assessed as a three since...
So, you would have taxes on a three-family?
Absolutely, absolutely. And I asked, I asked them to go back to, go back as far as they, they could, and I, I'm not sure that they couldn't go further back than this, but she print, gave me a print out that shows back in ninety-nine it was...
So, you have documentation that you've been paying taxes on a three-family since...
Oh, I can, I, I can get my documentation. This is, goes back prior to me owning it. I'm, I'm, since I've owned it, it was, it's been a three-family.
Do I have a latest building assessment?
No, I, I mean, the, the...
If your property...
Yeah, the property record card shows it.
If your property shows it as a three.
Yeah.
But the builder's...
Right, the building department doesn't, but the assessors' office has assessed it as a three.
I don't understand the...
I, I understand that.
If you legally have paid as a three...
Yeah.
You can show proof that you have been paying as a three.
Sure, absolutely. As a matter of fact, I, I may have it.
Because your official record is with ISD, so...
Correct.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, you know, okay, well, we've, we've seen a lot of this recently, and I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say to you what we've said to a lot of people in the, in the past couple of months that have come up with this. If, if you want it to be a three-family, you're gonna have to at least prove to me how it's a three-family. I wanna see the layout of it, I wanna see how it's laid out, I wanna see a, 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 a up-to-date parking plan showing me that you can support the parking, legal parking for a three-family house.
Well, if I may, if, if I can show that it was occupied as a three prior to nineteen-sixty-four...
I'm sorry, complying with the neighbors'...
If it was, if it was a three-family, and there was no discussion about it being a three-family, why would we stand in there in front of us? The city rep sees it as a two-family. I don't, I, you know, I empathize with you that you've been paying taxes on it as a three-family the whole time. That's what I'm saying. I'm not saying that you can't, or we're gonna tell you that it can't be a three-family. What I'm saying from my point of view, I was one of five. I wanna see proof...
Yes.
That the floor layout is conducive with a three-family, the egress is conducive with a three-family, the parking is conducive with a three-family, and all, all enough involves to a three-family are, are here. And I, you don't have that right now, so that, you know, from, from my point of view, we, we just seen a ton of it. There, there's been a run on the board with, you know, people that have, you know, two-families that want to be three-families, and they've been paying the taxes here, here, unfortunately, one of many.
I, I, I mean, I'm aware of it.
But you've also been...
That's right.
Oh, I, I'm, yeah, I'm not, I'm not crying in warm up over, over that issue.
The difference in the rent versus the difference in the taxes is substantial.
Yeah.
Um, so the ISD records show that this was built as a two-family prior to nineteen-twenty-six.
Correct.
And it was never converted to a three.
Correct.
So, and I gotta tell you, to be honest with you, the property's not in the best shape down there. The property is not in the best shape.
Well, it's actually been...
The grounds, you know, you had a safety violation, you had plywood knocked up against the cellar door, uh, you've got work up in the eaves. Um, it's not an attractive piece of property, and I think, if someone's gonna come before this board and get, you know, and get something of, of what we're giving you, which will increase the value of the property, um, I think you could, you're gonna do a better job of maintaining a decent property.
If I, if I can address...
You can address this, can you?
The eaves, the, uh, that's being worked on, I don't know if, that's being worked on as we speak as far as the property being renovated. I had a tenant move out, so that, that's being redone so somebody can move in, but the eaves will be addressed. Those eaves were, uh, a result of the, of the winter, and we had a problem with it in the winter, and it was delayed until the weather broke, and then I had a tenant move out. We, I kind of pressed focus on getting that re-rented, but that is gonna be addressed ASAP, um, along with the old property. We may, you know, asphalt the area, the parking area, regardless of whether it's a three or two, or asphalt the area, the, the tenants that are there now, I actually don't want me to, because they don't have, none of them have cars, and they use it as their, the, the patio area. So, you see tables and chairs, and then, uh, one of the tenants uses, had a vegetable garden, we had to tell him he couldn't, he couldn't use it anymore because we're gonna, we're gonna make that parking. Um, and, you know, they're disappointed, and I feel bad for the tenants, because they're very good tenants, um, and they keep the property safe, and they keep the neighbors, they, they're the people in the neighborhood who have everybody over and have parties, and, and, and just have, it's like sort of a s- safety. So, I, I don't wanna upset them, but I, I, I agree that, that that area could be cleaned up, um, and they use that area, and they enjoy using the area, and it's sort of a juggling act for me because I like to keep my tenants happy, they, they, they're good people, they, they...
Well, that's a shot take that says broken in half, and we're against the other people's problem, that's the best.
Yeah, um, there's, there's a, yeah, I mean, that, that's gotta be addressed as well, but that, there's a question as to who, who did that, but that's a different story.
You have the basketball court, this?
Yes.
So, you have two spot parking spaces, six right now. Let's put it up.
In the back?
On the frame.
Yeah, yeah.
You're gonna tell me that these three cars have to back out for any one of these people, or these?
That, that would be, that, that would be on that plan. The other option would be to have three spaces that, that, that people could get out, but it wouldn't be five. So, I had an option at the time to just show whether, whether there's five possible cars to park in the, in the area on the, on the property, or three. So, I chose this as, as an option. Either way, I know, either way, it doesn't comply. Um, I didn't know what would be the risk of the two evils, so to speak.
There's another pocket here, there's another pocket here, there's another parking space, it's right on top of the house.
That's why, so there's no, there's none of those parking spaces. And what you have, I understand from the board's point of view, the, the stuff all has to be, the spaces have to be legal, all this stuff has to be in place, because, but regardless of what's being used as now, if you turn around the day after we approve this and sell it, it's now it's a three-family.
Right.
And you put it on the market as a three-family, a legal three-family, like...
I understand.
It's gotta be in play, you know, so, that's, that's where we come from with it, too. It's gotta, it's gotta all be up this and up. I'm sorry, I might go on and do...
Um, did you put out a sale of the house in the near future?
I don't have any specific plans to sell the house in the near future. I have, I have a few different properties inland, and, and right now, my, I, I sold those that, that weren't good income-producing properties, and sort of have four properties that are, that I, I do well and I like, and I just wanna maintain and, and move forward, and hopefully I, any downturn, if it comes, will survive and move on, so, uh, and keep going. But nope, no set plans, but, um...
Do you live in the city?
I, I grew up in the city. I don't live here any longer. I got my offices in Saugus. I grew up on, on, uh, by the Union Hospital. Um, my family owned the Side Street Pub for years, and, um, so my family has been, you know, been around for a while, but, uh, unfortunately, uh, my, my father's gone, and, and my sister and I moved out of the city, so we're not here any longer, but my office sucks.
I just wanna reiterate, um, what the chairman said, Mr. Cole said, we haven't had a run of these, and, and it really has not been the will of the board to, uh, to approve these existing twos or living accidents, threes, so, just, you know, three for one, before you go, nothing, or any kind of plans, or anything like that.
Right, I mean, obviously, I wouldn't invest the money unless I was confident I could show...
Yeah.
It had everything.
And, and the chairman's point, you know, pretty clearly, we need to, we need to D.C. to buy legitimate parking spaces before they begin.
Right, okay.
I have a question for the board. You have a question for the board?
Thank you.
Anything else in favor of this petition? Anybody else in favor? So, you're gonna allow closing, those in favor? Anybody here in opposition to this petition? Anybody in opposition? So, you're gonna allow closing, those in opposition? What's motion for the board? Would you want to withdraw, or...
Give them a choice, because otherwise, I mean, I will, I will make a motion, and I have declared to withdraw without prejudice.
Yes, I would, I would absolutely prefer to do that, yes. Now, give me the option, if I can bring it up and show you, then I can refi.
I, I, I tell you, I could be continuous, but if you can't come back with the, you know, the legal parking and, and this stuff like that, I'm, I'm not gonna hold this on a relationship.
That's right.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I, I would...
Right, I, I agree with you, I'd better not throw it. Thank you.
What the board?
So, I'll make a motion to withdraw without prejudice.
Motion made, seconded. Please call the board.
Mr. Wood, to withdraw without prejudice?
Yes.
Mr. Callen, to withdraw without prejudice?
Yes.
Mrs. Curly, to withdraw without prejudice?
Yes.
Mr. Cole, to withdraw?
Yes.
Mr. DeSona, to withdraw?
Yes.
Motion to continue?
Yes.
Mr. Callen, continue?
I want to continue, okay.
You haven't heard it yet? Okay? No, we haven't...
We opened it.
No, we didn't, yeah, we didn't.
We have, we have...
I, I didn't vote, I, I went to start. What, 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 what?
We didn't open it off, because he sent the letter last time, Joe.
So, do you want it?
Yes, I want it.
Hi, Mr. White.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Wood, to continue? Mr. Callen, continue?
Yes, continue.
Mr. Callen, continue?
Yes, continue.
You haven't heard it yet? Okay? No, we haven't...
We opened it.
No, we didn't, yeah, we didn't.
We have, we have...
I, I didn't vote, I, I went to start. What, 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 what?
We didn't open it off, because he sent the letter last time, Joe.
So, do you want it?
Yes, I want it.
Hi, Mr. White.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Wood, what is it? Mr. White, to continue?
Yeah.
Mr. Co, um, Mrs. Curly, to continue?
Yes.
Mrs. Curly, to continue?
Yes.
Mr. Cole, to continue?
Yeah.
Mr. DeSona, to continue?
Yes.
The next case this evening will be case number nine-eight-eight-four, seventy-one Lincoln Street. Petitioner Jeffrey, uh, permitted the, uh, operation of the kennel facility, including twenty-four hours overnight, for your...
Um, I was a little initially surprised by, um, the call from the city, which indicated that I needed this, because it was my, um, intent from the very beginning. I don't know where the confusion was. Um, we had a ribbon cutting with the mayor, uh, my two city councilors, the state rep, full tour of the facility, and, uh...
I was...
Yeah, actually, Jan toured it as well. I wasn't there at the time, this is my manager, Tom, and so, um, when I talked to the councilman, they said, um, it was a business they always understood it to be. Um, but I was asked to go through the process of requiring a variance. Apparently, there's some, um, varying opinions as to what defines a kennel, as to a doggy daycare, as I know you can attest, John, I mean, Jan, we have no kennels of any sort there. Um, our primary base of business is that we entertain people's dogs like a babysitter all day long, and as a sideline, when those same people go on vacation, um, actually, our quietest time is, uh, at night, when a dog may stay over and, and sleep. Um, so, I'm more than happy to, to answer any questions or concerns that the board may have.
I, I just got a question, so, they haven't checked your yard?
No, no, they, um, Roger Ennis from the special services called and said, Jeff, have you boarded dogs there? And I said, um, not, not, at that point, I had not, um, and I said, no, and he said, well, if you intend to, um, you need to get a, a kennel license. And I did extensive research in, in Massachusetts, and at the time, I thought it was a, kind of a good thing, there were no, um, regulations or variances or anything else that govern doggy daycare. So, I visited about twelve of them, and have countless hours into this, and nobody in any of the surrounding cities is recognized as a kennel, uh, and they all board overnight. So, um, evidently, it was miscommunication between Roger and I, but, um, I just followed what I thought was proper procedure. Um, so he said I was, I wouldn't be allowed to board, and then there was a conversation between a friend of mine who's an attorney, who's not acting as attorney, his name's James O'Shea, he also knows Mr. Lamanna, and they came up with the definition of a personal kennel, which meant I could board five dogs or less overnight. Um, my response was, okay, if I get there in my business, the revenue supports me, meaning to do more, then I will do that. Um, but they thought it was best that I continue doing business as I've been doing it, but that I bring this petition to you guys for, uh, for variance.
Just, just a couple, first, first several questions, so...
Yeah.
With the overall background of the process, there's only, there's only one employee there.
No, no.
So, it's a normal business hour, the dog is staying overnight?
Yeah, that's, that's absolutely right. So, uh, um, five-thirty A.M. is our earliest drop-off, um, and usually at night, seven P.M. is about the latest pickup. If a dog stops, stays there overnight, the very nature of that is there's a drop-off at some point during that period, and then no traffic at all related to that period until daytime hours, two, three, five days later.
Perfect.
I just got a question, so they haven't checked your yard already?
No, no, they, um, Roger Ennis from the special services called and said, Jeff, have you boarded dogs there? And I said, um, not, not, at that point, I had not. Um, and I said, no, and he said, well, if you intend to, um, you need to get a kennel license. And I did extensive research in Massachusetts at the time. I thought it was a kind of a good thing. There were no, um, regulations or variances or anything else that govern doggy daycare. So I visited about twelve of them and have countless hours into this. And nobody in any of the surrounding cities is recognized as a kennel. Uh, and they all board overnight. So, um, evidently, it was miscommunication between Roger and I, but, um, I just followed what I thought was proper procedure. Um, so he said I was, I wouldn't be allowed to board. And then there was a conversation between a friend of mine, who's an attorney, who's not acting as attorney. His name's James O'Shea. He also knows Mr. Lamanna. And they came up with the definition of a personal kennel, which meant I could board five dogs or less overnight. Um, my response was, okay, if I get there in my business, the revenue supports me, meaning to do more, then I will do that. Um, but they thought it was best that I continue doing business as I've been doing it, but that I bring this petition to you guys for, uh, for variance.
Just a couple, a quick, a quick simple question, so.
Yeah.
With the ongoing background of the process, there's only two employees there.
It's only one.
One, yeah, so.
What time do you stop? The, uh, so people aren't coming to know, and I have to pick up the dog.
No, no.
So it's a normal business hour, the dog is staying overnight.
Yeah, that's, that's absolutely right. So, uh, um, five-thirty a.m. is our earliest drop-off. Um, and usually at night, seven p.m. is about the latest pickup. If a dog stops, stays there overnight, the very nature of that is there's a drop-off at some point during that period. And then no traffic at all related to that period until daytime hours, two, three, five days later.
Perfect. And you said there's only one employee early at night?
At night, i- i- if, yeah, I can't foresee the need for, yeah.
Just looking at some of the things that could be potential problems in the overnight, because obviously, it's not, you know, you don't have to, obviously, it's not like.
Yeah, yeah, none of this.
It's kind of, you know, looking at more than it, the comings and goings and the.
Yeah, we won't leave.
Now, I, now, any other questions?
No, Mr. Chairman, um, you brought it up earlier, Captain, because the twenty-four hour overnight boarding, do you think that they're going to have to go to City Council for that?
They do. You're going to have to do a special permit, or not the last stop.
Yeah, so we've already, um, paid for and applied for not only this hearing, but also for that special permit hearing. And, um, that was a point of confusion because what we have is available. So if there's no dog there, I'm out there hanging out hoping for the phone to ring. Nor am I paying a staff person to do that. I'm home sleeping. Um, so the reason why we say available is because I can afford the business phone. If, Jan, I know you've visited, thank you, if you had an emergency and said, hey, I gotta go out of town, or for whatever reason, I can be back there from the hunt in ten minutes to try to accommodate you. So that's, I, I can't ever foresee a time that we're a twenty-four hour operation until, you know, I don't know how many people are dropping their dogs off in the middle of the night, but we are available, and if we're boarding a dog, then certainly, I'm going to have a human there. It's, you know what I mean? And so that's, that's.
If you called that number now, it would actually ring my phone, I got a, to me now, just in case somebody.
The, uh, the address is seventy-one Linden Street, but there's no door.
That's correct, so.
What is it? Six fifty-five?
Six fifty-five, so there's only.
Is that where all man marks?
It's in ours, in between the Black Fridays and the loading dock.
Yeah.
Between that loading dock.
So.
People looking for this address for the petition we got, you can drive hours, and then a far exonerated one in.
A- a- actually, right, so when I.
It's actually changed.
I, I don't have the ability to change it. I, I had the same issue when I came up because in today's internet world, seventy-one Linden Street, you'd need a map. It's the same physical structure as you saw by the pictures, but.
But sixty-five is the actual, the address of that door.
Which I wanted to use.
Okay.
And wasn't allowed to by the city.
The board could have that address changed.
That would be wonderful.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, that'd be huge, so.
Yeah, Linden Street, we're trying to run it to you.
Right, you're right, yeah. So I made the same initial argument, not argument, but I'm saying, the building is so big, it only has one address.
Which is the Linden Street?
No, the, the address is Linden Street. That's correct, but I.
But if we give them that permission, who's going to tell the census that that's the census office? Not us. That's not, that's not something that we can, we're all set that down, but the census office controls that.
Yeah, so this is the first time I was aware, Mr. Callen made me aware, we should change that. And it would make my life a whole lot easier.
I mean, I don't have any skin in the hand either way with that, but I guess, that's the census, isn't it? I mean, I don't know, let's say there's one.
Yeah, that's something.
Yeah, I, I know, I mean. What is your actual, your business addresses?
Seventy-one Linden Street.
In IS eight?
Although, eh, yes, everybody agrees, all my permits and everything, but in order to get, you could not get into my business from seventy-one Linden Street. Because the building is the size of four football fields. That's the only address listed on.
You can have that pay for it right there, because it's wrong to know.
That's right.
You have to go through the wall.
Well, no, you'd have to go through.
It's not outside.
No, no, from seventy-one Linden, in the middle of the building, there are actually three businesses that could. So if I, if I, if I had permission, I could walk through the front door, across the lobby, through one of those three businesses.
That's going to be correct.
Well, you do have a sign in the house, though.
Yes, I do, yeah. On, yeah, on some, for that reason, pointing people around, on some.
Um, so the position at hand is, is the overnight keeping of the dogs, and that's the question.
Yeah, that.
They're doing the use variance.
Absolutely, we should put a flag.
I just was wondering, because I, I went to today's, I went to that whole thing on Linden Street. I went to another building, and, you know, there was one section that had, had a listing of all the businesses and all their suites and everything, so forth. Finally, I saw a person, they said it's over next to the Fridays, so. And then I went in, and I guess I just missed you. So I was just curious about the inside, what, what I, and, I mean, I don't know what makes a kennel, but do they, do they have little cages that they do?
No, they don't. Um, we were privileged of Jan and, and, um, Ms. Rawlins, right here. Yeah, so she came in with a couple of dogs. I wasn't there at the time, but our whole business model is that we do not kennel. We.
So kennels, where are you in the?
In a cage. Now, we have two.
Exceptions.
One giant one with no door on it, in case dogs are on private side, time. And then we have another one that's with the door propped open for the same reason. But if anyone, you brought your dog in there and said, we kennel our dog at night. I don't want to be able to roam around my house for free. We would, we would then shut the door of that kennel, but still, of the, it's not a kennel, it's actually a dog crate. Um, because we don't want to develop bad habits for the business owner. Because at our place, they're free to sit on, I have pictures and I, and I sent them, I didn't know if you guys have them, but yeah, feel free to look at them on our phone. It's, if you picture a giant living room with epoxy resin floors, furniture that we call disposable, because when it gets too old, or, you know, there's dog hair on it, a smell, or they chew it, it goes out, and we bring another one in. So, um, I don't know if you want to add to this, but I feel confident because she had the privilege to, well, not privileged, but I guess I'm privileged for her to see it. But it's, it's like a simple, giant living room where the dogs run and play around all day. And if you want it to be in a cage at night, we ask you to provide that if, if they don't fit in the one that we, because that's not our thing. Our thing is to make the dogs feel like they're at home. And if in the daycare option gets to ten dogs or more, which we haven't done yet, then we add a staff. You know what I'm saying? So, uh, the industry standards for staff to dog, about sixteen to one. I'm not, I don't believe in it. My daughter worked at one, it was out of control, that's how I got into the business. So I'm trying to keep it reasonable, I think, ten to one is certainly that, so.
It's a single bed, a single bed with a, um, slide.
Yeah.
So you can get in the bed and then slide.
Well, most of them do walk down.
It's a huge sofa.
Yeah.
It's part of a big screen TV.
Yeah.
To me, that, this whole thing is mirror.
Yeah.
You can walk by it.
Yeah, that's pretty.
Then there's an office with all the glass in.
Yeah.
All the seats, all of this.
Yeah.
And I understand that you are going to break through the wall.
Correct.
There's a roof out there, and you're going to put a fence all around the roof so the dogs can go in and out.
Yeah, with the, with the deck, and that means architectural drawings with the city that blue stamped, that's been approved. I just have to wait for my finances to kind of jump with my aspirations. But it's all, that's all been, that's all been permitted to the city already as part of my initial plan. And then they allowed me to break it into phase one and phase two when I was running out of cash.
Kind of different business model, really.
Well, the whole, so, there were things that I didn't know. I, I think I did it planned as well as anybody could, but I didn't realize, you know, commercial building, it's cast iron and copper, and at my house, it's fiberglass, and so there were just little things. I didn't realize that to get a drain in there, I thought, let me get ahead of the curb, put some drains in there. I didn't realize that the hole for the drain, just the hole, had to go through thirteen and a half inches of concrete, so I'm paying four hundred dollars for a hole, I got seven of them. You know what I mean? To core through the hole. You know what I mean? These are things that I planned for, but not accurately from a financial perspective because it was beyond my understanding.
Any other questions to the board?
No.
Any other questions? Thank you, gentlemen. Um, anybody else in favor of this petition? Anybody else here in favor? So if they're not opposed, for those in favor. Anybody in opposition? Anybody here in opposition to this petition? So if they're not opposed, for those in opposition, what's motion for the board?
Take a moment to discuss.
Motion made in second, call the board.
Mr. Wood, to grant?
Yes, to grant.
Mr. Callen, to grant?
Yes, to grant.
Mrs. Crowley, to grant?
Yes, to grant.
Mr. Cole, to grant?
Yes.
Mr. Jussono, to grant?
Yes, to grant. Sir, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir, appreciate you, your help. Thank you very much.
The next case this evening is case number nine eight eight one seventy-one.
Nice to find this with a face with a name too. Thank you.
Petition, uh, any rehab property by its attorney Sam Rattell to permit the demolition of a pre-existing non-performing single-family dwelling to be replaced by the construction of a new two-family dwelling with three parking spaces in the Al four Park House District on a non-performing lot unless it's in a quiet area with the dimension as such is not, such use is not substantially more detrimental than dry use. That's the neighborhood.
Former lawyer, um, he's done a lot of work in the city of Lynn rehabbing houses. He acquired this house and determined that it couldn't be salvaged because it would send such disrepair. Uh, so we came before you with a proposal, as Mr. Jussono read, um, to have a use, which is a permitted use, uh, in this district, uh, on this lot, uh, but removing the existing home. Originally, we had, uh, talked about taking down the garage, and there were concerns about first parking and green space, and then there was a concern with respect to, um, whether there was a foundation. I think those were the, oh, and then Mr. Cole, I think, had a concern with respect to, uh, dressing up the front of the building and to what the exterior would look like. So we, we think we address those in the following manner. Um, rather than pave the back lot, uh, because of its proximity to the rail trail, uh, we decided we would retain the existing concrete garage, refurbish it, and use the two-car garage to park two cars, and that way, only have to have one exterior space and provide the land closest to the, if it ever comes, the community trail or whatever it's called, the rail trail, the back of the property. Um, with respect to the, uh, the size of the house, I think, uh, someone here had pointed out rightly that, uh, the size of the house that we had, um, a practical consideration was that we could, the modular company couldn't deliver on that street and make the swing. So we had to revisit the, the size of the proposed house. There's no question that the size of the proposed house is bigger than the existing house, but it's smaller than, I think, our earlier plan. And, and then the question came when we presented you with that plan, was, uh, I think it was Mr. Cole who had the questions about dressing up, uh, the front. And we talked about projecting eaves, and I, I had a current concern, and that's one of the reasons I had Mr. Reed revisit the plan, that we needed to have, and I think I sent along a picture of the existing, uh, front exit now. Uh, but we need to have, uh, a minimum of a ten-foot, uh, front setback. And because of the angle, the lot, the lot's not a perfect rectangle, and so because of the angle, it's like ten-four on one side and, and ten on the other. But doing that, we brought the building a little bit forward, but still retained having the ten-foot setback on the, uh, front setback. Um, we, uh, positioned the house, uh, as it's shown in the, on Mr. Reed's plan and with the third revision. As far as the, I think, I can't recall who had the question about the exterior, but we actually bought, and Jim can explain what the exterior is made of. And then as far as dressing up the front, as you know, when you buy a modular home, when you purchase one, it comes from the factory, that's the way it comes. Then you need to do certain things. So one of the questions that, uh, was above my pay grade was this, this question about the foundation. But the plan that says revision three shows at least a two-foot above-ground, uh, foundation. There is no basement, but there is a foundation which one member had a concern about, uh, and it doesn't affect us adversely in terms of requisite height and satisfying, uh, the maximum height. Uh, with respect to the, uh, dressing up of the front, Jim has brought, uh, these are homes in Lynn that he's done work on, but I think, as I understood it from Mr. Cole, um, he wanted to see something like a projecting eave, so we've got some photographs of work that he had done with projecting eaves. And mind you, there's going to be two doors, as I understand it, if you look at the plan revision three. And so Jim can describe what.
Sorry, sir?
Is that you knowing?
Yes, sir.
It says up in the top corner, I think, revision three.
Okay, yeah, that's.
Okay.
No, I got it.
So with respect to dressing up the front, he can explain with, and, and brought for me, like, before and afters and other addresses and houses, but as I understood it, we could, uh, we can't buy it with those things, but obviously, we have to put front steps on.
Yeah.
We have to put a projecting eave.
Yeah.
And what Mr. Reed and I discussed is that, um, how far the projecting eave project affects whether it gets counted in the front setback. So I think you can have up to a foot and a half of a projecting eave, or, and, and not have it count as part of the structure. There's a footnote in the zone ordinance that said projecting eaves don't count in, in terms of measuring the front setback. But to describe that, he brought some photographs to describe what the exterior would look like. He brought actual, uh, material. I think one is the side, one is the front. So I think we covered, uh, what the concerns were. And, and Mrs. Crowley, I think you had a concern about green space. So we revisited the parking plan and said, the problem with the parking plan as we had it is we would have to pay to make those spaces and reach them in the rear, and we're working against ourselves in terms of, of open space and green space. So by retaining the garage, putting two in the garage, bringing the house forward and putting the third space, we then leave that back area open, uh, which is closest to where they propose to put the rail trail.
Yeah, that's a photo copy?
I can't see.
Do you have a better one?
I don't.
You can't see the driveway, you can see this.
No, this is the ground, yeah, here's where you can't see on this one. Listen, because we sent them, she's got a very clear copy, sorry. It's way, it's a grayscale also, it comes off.
It's dated, uh, it says on it, revised on five thirty-one nineteen for parking green space.
Yeah, this one, this one's, this one's, the grayscale doesn't catch. I'm going to copy, it has to be from the original.
Oh, yeah, that's twenty-seven feet, yeah, that's the most recent?
Uh, no, well, no, it says, uh, five thirty-one parking green space.
Yeah, because it's something here, we might have.
Oh, that's one, that's one's right, parking.
And then I think we also provided, this is the existing garage.
See, and what is the wide parking in the apartment house district?
Uh, forty percent.
Forty percent. Are these two better?
I'm sorry, yes, they are.
Two better, you got two better. The new foundation is only twenty-seven and a half feet wide. Fifty-two feet.
It's actually going to be shorter than the current structure.
And you're not going to have a, uh, full foundation?
Correct. It's like a utility pool.
There's no deck on the ground.
There is, there is a full base over there now, I'm sorry. A deck, um, we haven't, I don't believe so, we're not going to put a deck on it. Because the front end is, we're not going to put a deck on the back. It's a lot better, yeah.
Do you have a full basement or not?
No, sir, no.
That way.
They're not cost effective. It's going to be a utility pool, the color, yes.
All right, so you got some samples?
Yep, so these aren't, these are, these are just, these aren't necessarily going to be the colors, I think, as I, but. So the front will be this, which is like a shaker. It's a little bit nicer than that one, but it's, it's a shaker front.
The purpose of that is, it's a shield, is that right?
Yes, so it gives, it gives the appearance that you have like a seat.
That's on the front.
Right, and then the side, we do a wood grain, is the wood grain on the sides. That's about five times the expense of that, so that's why, I just put this on my house, actually. And then one very similar to that. Very weather efficient, and the good thing is the, um, the structure itself shouldn't take more than three days to put up. So minimal mental impact on the neighborhood. And then with respect to the A-frame, this is very similar to what we would be doing, except we're covering the two doors, that comes out about twenty inches, I'd say it comes out eighteen inches. It matches, if you take a look at the picture, the drawing, all three of them are A-frames, it's going to be very similar to that.
So you just look at the two doors?
Yes, sir.
Again, just to buffer it up and.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, so he brought, so I mean, these are, I think this is, this is the before and after.
This is just some ideas that, this one, we, we had to put the things up, but this would be like a before and after, this on Allen Ave.
What are those addresses, Allen Ave?
Seventy-five Allen Ave, before and after, and it's just a whole new house. I have tons of pictures of what the interior.
That's a, that's, now, that's.
That's, that's everything we do in Lynn, every single project we do is like, right now. I mean, we, 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 myself. But honestly, twenty-five years of the first house, I had it, we couldn't save it, there's just no way.
Yeah. No? You got black on this one? Again, you got, you got a fifty black. You still got green space for the bike back someday.
I think they got to call it a rail trail or something. I don't, I think you could.
It's not that, it's a bike back, fifteen years ago.
So I just get some of theirs.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, do a lot of it.
I don't have any questions. You, I don't know.
I like this gavel, though, if you can hit the gavel, you're on.
Yeah, it's exactly what the actions, it's a bit of a loss. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Thank you, sir.
I was going to, I was going to call me on the landscape while I did today, but.
I'm sorry?
I was going to call me on the landscape. The current state of the landscape.
We want to get the back goes in, and get a.
Right, we want to demolish it, right.
Yeah. We're trying to work out a deal for the neighbor too, to take care of that one too.
There are people who know that he's purchased this one who've contacted us, other people in that neighborhood.
Is, is he fat cheaper?
It's much less expensive and it's much better quality. It's not like eighty-three. Well, because what happens is, you don't have to deal with the elements, they win, everything else, you don't have to deal with the personalities. They have a system in place that gets everything start to finish. So if one of my workers had too much to drink the night before, I don't have to deal with that.
Well, who should I?
It's, it's amazing, it would amaze you, it's sad, it's really sad.
Oh, sure.
No, it's not.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other sort of questions?
Hey, you're going to kill some breaks.
You said this for me. You went.